So, uh, very good afternoon, everyone. There's forty one of you in the class in the session at the moment, uh, besides myself and our speaker. So, uh, very good afternoon, Assalamualaikum, Salam to Jatra, to all who managed to come. Today's class is online via Webex. So, um, I want to welcome, uh, first of all, our speaker into the class today, uh, Kasi. Kasi will be, uh, giving her talk in a while. But before Kasi starts her session, uh, Kasi give me some time so I can do some briefing first, uh, to, to everyone. So, okay, uh, as you guys know, today marks the start of our five-week study session. So what is this study session all about? Basically, I bring my friends slash student. Um, the next two sessions, session number two and session number three are my students actually. And then the rest are friends. So basically, what they have to do is they come to class, they've shared the experience. There's a scope that is given to them to share. And then, uh, this is where you can relate what's happening in our actual syllabus. With what, with what, what's actually happening, uh, out there, uh, the real-life situation. So the whole purpose of doing this is to get you guys to, uh, to match. Okay, is out, are the theories that we learn, uh, applicable or suitable, uh, in practice outside. So with that, uh, let me quickly, uh, share my screen first in terms of, uh, things that I need to update everyone. Okay, uh, this is your e-learning page. I think most of you are familiar with this. Kasi is slightly upgraded page of e-learning, but, um, this is same functions from last time. So I want you guys to go down to. Okay, Weeks nineteen to fourteen, study section with externus. Weeks nineteen to fourteen, uh, study section with externus. This morning, I added another slide into, uh, the, uh, the system. Let me stop sharing and toggle to the other slide a bit so that you can have a look. Uh, I will put the slides into the chat function. So you can directly, alternatively, you can go to e-learning to, uh, to check the file out. Now you should be able to see a Google slide pitch. To download this slide, uh, click file, go to download. And you can choose what kind of, uh, format that you want to download. I recommend either PowerPoint or PDF. This file is the master file for all the theories that we're going to learn for the next five weeks. The speaker won't be talking about it, the speakers won't be talking about it, of course, but I want you guys to have a look at what, what kind of concepts on theories that we will be covering. So, um. A quick update, uh, every session that we have is actually designed based on a particular set of theory or a particular set of, uh, concepts. So today, session one, cycle social development approaches in student development. Study session two and three, where my students will come in, uh, they will talk about cognitive structural approaches. And, uh, the wellness model, uh, the wellness model is actually, um, a con- very important content that is covered in one, two and three. One, two, and three. Session four, uh, global citizenship, uh, very important, uh, in the context of, for example, in our class today, uh, we have both domestic students, domestics, domestic means for Malaysia and international students. Why is it important for us to understand what is the global citizenship, uh, concept? And finally, the final session, uh, social identity theory and person environment, uh, interactive theories. So, um, essentially, what you have to do after every session is to write up a reflection, uh, is ten marks per reflection. Check the deadline for something, uh, inside the file. So essentially, a guide for you to track your timeline, um, one week after the session, that's the deadline. But the hard deadline, as I mentioned, at the start of the class is the final week of week fifteen. Finally, of week fifteen is the last class of the semester. So, uh, make sure you submit everything by that week. For your, uh, stuff to be marked by me. All right, so reflection questions, um, there is a set of guidelines. Also, go back to e-learning, as I mentioned from last week. For the guidelines, uh, essentially, this is the, uh, guiding questions. What are the three learning points that you will go through, uh, throughout the session? How do you relate? Why do you relate to the points? What are the important components to manage in student development? And finally, what can you do with the learning points obtained? So, um, essentially, guys, uh, what is, what should be done is, uh, attend class. Go through the, uh, Google slide presentation just now. Every week, there is, there is a set of theories that you need to handle. For example, uh, this week, uh, we are going to handle psycho-social development approaches. So there's a set of theories, uh, presented. And then at the end of the session, um, prepare your reflection. And this reflection is ten marks per reflection, uh, based on a set of items. If you want to have a look at how do I grade the marks, they, um, go back to your e-learning page. Let me share the page, uh, with you guys. Okay, this is on your e-learning. Let me click back and see, uh, remind everyone where is the item located. The item is located at Weeks nine to fourteen, study session with externus, reflection guideline. Click on it. Scroll down. And this is how your items will be graded. Essentially, uh, there are five, uh, two scales, uh, depth of reflection and texture evidence. Format, I do not need a long content, one page, A4 in English, convert into PDF before uploading. All right, so, um, any questions, guys? You haven't started doing it, so there might be questions later, so, uh, you can still ask. Anyway, that's my part of the briefing. We will head straight into the next session, uh, which is the study session. Kasi, the session is yours. Some story about how Kasi and I met, uh, Kasi was a student from UTM before. I think you can introduce yourself, uh, a bit, uh, better later. We met through student organization, uh, conducting activities for students relating to global citizenship. Something that another friend will cover later on in the weeks. And, uh, after Kasi left, uh, UTM, she, uh, pursued study in a completely different field. And you ended up working on the field that you're, you're pursuing for masters. So I think, uh, the students might be interested to, to, to know, uh, what's your background like? How do you enter your current field? And, uh, some interesting items that you want to share with your, with your, uh, your, with our students today. So, um, with that, Kasi, the floor is yours. Enjoy yourself, uh, but guys, if you have any questions at all, uh, you jot down your questions. There are two ways of doing it, either, uh, typing in the chat function or you switch on, like, ask directly. So those are the two ways that you can ask your questions. Don't worry about whether you can capture, um, the session content or not, because the recording I will share with everyone after Webex has generated the recording. So, uh, Kasi officially is yours. Thank you so much for coming, uh, into my class today.
Thank you, thank you, Dora, for inviting me. I'm actually quite shocked when she asked me to keep a sharing session. It's been a while since the last time I did my sharing, honestly. So I was a bit nervous, okay. Anyway, uh, nice to have you all here. I see some faces here and, and thank you for, for having the video so that I, I know I have some audience in front of me. Okay, so, uh, I'm Kasi, you can just call me Kasi. Oh, thank you for the claps, that's very nice. Okay, so, um, Dora, can I have a slide?
I'm muted, okay. Ganyan, I see you raising your hand, is it accidental, uh, or you have a question you want to ask?
Sorry, it's wrong click.
She now also raised hand, are you having issue with your, you want to have, you want to ask question? Nana? Okay, uh, keep your questions, uh, so, uh, Kasi, the floor is yours, just let me know when to click.
Okay, okay, yes, so, um, before I start, uh, just, just let me know if I talk too fast or talk too slow that you don't really understand, you just let me know. So you can just raise your hands or you can just put in the chat box, right? So, um, there will be time that I would, would love to have some responses or, or questions from you or feedback from you all, okay? So I'm Kasi, I'm the school counselor with three KL International School. So I'm based in KL right now in Subang Jaya. So this is my full-time job, but actually I do have, um, engaged with some other centers doing private practice. So I do see adults and my major job, which is based in school, which, which means I actually see a lot of secondary students in my school, which is from year, we call it year seven to year eleven, around thirteen to seventeen or eighteen years old in my school. Okay, so next. Thank you, so Dora say, um, to introduce ourselves a little bit, yeah, so I thought maybe just a bit of, um, things about me and probably will. You can find some reason why I actually switched my job later on. Okay, so, uh, first of all, oh, I, I'm a Johorian, so I actually studied in UTN with Dora many years back, so I'm actually from Johor as well, but currently I'm working in KL. I love to travel a lot, so that was one of the reason why I joined a society with Dora the other day, like, last time. Because I really love to have internship, obviously, so I did my internship in Czech Republic last time and did my travelling a lot in Europe. I'm an art lover, I love whichever art form, it can be photography, music, um, paintings, et cetera, et cetera. I'm an explorer, I really love to explore new things, that's why I can see the photo. I, I love to explore different, different activities. I think I enjoy having some, uh, something to moving forward, yeah, some motivation in life. That's why I'm like, keep trying new things, experience new things. And next is some quite determined, you can call me determined person, or you can call me stubborn person too. There's a thin line in between. I can be quite determined in the things I want to do later on, you find out more. But you can call me stubborn person too, I, I kind of like stick to what I really want and can be quite hot-headed towards that too, sometimes. Patient and impatient. I'm, I would say I'm quite patient with all my students, most of the time, yeah, if they don't get, make me angry. But, uh, most of the time, I'm pretty patient with them, no matter what they say and, um, what, in what kind of situations. I can be impatient in outside of counselling sessions. It depends on situation, yeah, especially when I'm driving, yeah, a bit more impatient. I self-came myself as ambivert between introvert and extrovert. I think there are times I prefer to enjoy my own time, like, alone, alone. There are times I like to hang out with friends, um, go travel or just makan-makan, I mean, eating together, like dinner together. These are what I like, so I think I'm quite balanced in a sense. And last but not least, uh, and just so Dora say, something changed me and I pursue in another master's degree, right? So maybe this is the core in me, which I believe in humanity. So I, I think, um, this core in me kind of drive, drove me to the other direction of my career path after I graduated from UTM. Yeah, so I'll share a bit more later, maybe the next one. Okay, so far you can catch me, right? If I don't say certain, certain things clearly, you can just give me a signal so I can stop and explain. Okay, so a little bit experience of mine, oh, I graduated around twenty ten, I think twenty ten, yes. So I was studying biology at the time, pure biology. Um, I think, is the faculty of education still the same building, Dora?
Uh, faculty of science still around, uh, faculty of, uh, faculty of education becomes school of education. And the faculty of social science and humanities. So, uh, yeah, social science and humanities cover, uh, school of education, language academy, uh, Islamic studies, human resource and shops, uh, human resource and psychology, uh, and then, uh, KL, there's another faculty, uh, social sciences in KL.
Wow, so it has expanded to that extent? Yes, yeah, because we used to be very close, like, faculty of science and I remember we, we kind of, maybe we bump into in the library quite often. Yes, very close to the library, yeah, so I was a biologist student last time and then I graduated because I don't really like work with DNA and RNA and chromosomes and all those things. So, or the virus, bacteria, those things I cannot see, I, I really cannot stand. So I decided to become something very different, which is a HR development person. So I became a trainer. Imagine after I graduated, the first job I have is actually a trainer. I, I even, I myself quite shocked, uh, quite thankful the, the, my previous manager actually has the faith in me. So she, she said I can try to become a trainer and see how it goes. So I was in training line, the conducting training for corporates or, uh, staffs, for example, soft skill training. Um, I did some very technical training, like, um, I was used to be with FedEx before. So I trained a lot of couriers in how they use their, with last time we called it Power Pet, that the one that you sign when you receive your package. Yeah, there's like a technical way of using that. So last time I did a lot of technical training, some soft skill training. Yeah, management training and things like that. So I was in a training line for many years until, um, there's a pause in me. You see the yellow color circle where I thought about what I want to do, what I really want to do in life. Is it, is it the setting right now, like, one to a lot of people? Is it what I really want? So I kind of paused and think about, yeah, maybe I prefer one-on-one. I prefer a very personal touch with the person in front of me. So that kind of switched my mind and thought about, why not I try something different? Yeah, and the core in me, which is the belief in humanity, I thought, I, I want to contribute more and more. So that's why I go into this, the current industry, which is the psychology industry. So I, I signed up my masters in counselling course with help in university in KL. So I did my part-time, um, part-time study, so I did like three years, including my internship. So eventually I got my license with the Lambaga Council of Malaysia. I became a registered counselor in twenty twenty until now. So, and I also pursue in grad cert family therapy with what I believe, um, the impact of family in the kids, yeah. I think it also part of my, my grow-up experiences, because I think I, because Dora mentioned about the psycho-social development just now, right? In the, in your theory, that's what we supposed to cover. Actually, I think I, I was a bit confused in my own identity when I was in high school. I was not in a good terms with my parents and I was striving and trying to find out what happened in my family and myself and a bit confused. But I think eventually I did manage to overcome that, I found my identity. So that was the reason why I thought I'm quite attached to teenagers. I really love to be with them, I, I hope I can contribute a lot with them. Think that that's the reason why I was in family therapy that much. And then I also in, uh, EFT, which is the emotional focused therapy, which is another school of talks, yeah. So that's my journey from a biologist student to a HR person, to a registered counselor, that's quite dramatic, right? We didn't, I don't know, like, ten-ish years, yeah. So far, is there any, anything that you want to talk about in any questions? If no, then, yeah, we can go, thanks. I hope I'm not doing too fast or too slow, okay? Yep, so, um, a little bit of day to day of my life as a current school counselor. Just a question, a quick question, maybe you can put in your chat box, right? What do you think that in your, in your impression, what do you think a school counselor should, school counselor should be doing? Do you put your feedback in your chat box? So you probably heard about school counselor, maybe you can imagine your school counselors back in your high school. How was it like, what was your impression? We don't say communicate with others, give advice to students when they have issues, yeah? Help students, yes? Anything else? Oh, enrollment, course guidance, yeah, solve students' problem, hmm? Introverted children has a place to talk, okay? Any other idea? Assist students to be better, okay? A bridge between students and teachers, okay? I think, I think generally I see the comments are more about helping the students to give them a place, right? A space, yeah, safety, yes, yes, organizing student activities, yes? Organized activities, safety, solve problems, career planning, oh, yeah. Basically, you're all bingo with most of the thing, except the one thing is, which I'm not doing, um, enrollment. Enrollment is part of, uh, we call admin's job, which we have admin department where they will handle all the recruitment and enrollment procedures, that is not under counselor's job. Okay, so, uh, basically, if you look at the pictures here, the main, main thing that I'm doing, yes, is counseling. So I give space to the students, to talk to students every single day. Imagine how many students I can meet a day, maybe you can have a guess. I, I work from around eight to four o'clock in afternoon. How many students do you think that I can meet a day? You can just pop up any random number. Five to ten students, wow. Three to five, eight. Maybe twenty, wow, wow, twenty, I'm, I'm probably not here, I'm probably in. You know, I, I need, I need to see counselor myself. Well, twenty is a lot, okay, more than hundred students, wait, 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 do you get my answer? My question, and my question is, how many students I see in a day, okay? One day, one day, not one month. Hundred students probably.
The answer is quite valid also, because if you see the total students that you meet come into class, come out of class, then hundred lah. But then probably, uh, the question is how many students that I have to meet one by one?
Yes, 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 you're right, okay, okay, now I understand why the, the, the answers are so, yeah, such a big range. Yeah, diverse, yes, 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 okay, okay, right, so for counseling, the maximum students I can meet for counseling. And when I say counseling sessions means one session takes at least, at least thirty minutes to one and a half hours, depending on the cases. So I see them, the most I can see for one day of work is the maximum, yeah, is six or seven, that's the maximum I can. Yeah, more than that, I, I cannot handle anymore. I, I need, I need time myself too, because it's very burdening, it's very heavy, yeah. So, um, in the normal setup, if you go to the private setting, uh, like, if you go to, um, private center, probably they can also, the maximum is also like, maximum like six or seven, two, about the same, actually. Because, um, due to the work nature itself, we, we absorb a lot of kind of like, uh, negativity or a lot of problems from people, right? So there's that much of, uh, a space that we can take in, we can't take more than that. And then, um, if you look at this, right, the administration one, right, is, there's a lock and every single session I need to write report. Which means every, let's say I meet that students for twenty times, I need to have twenty reports written. So imagine one report probably cost, like, takes me, maybe the quickest can be like twenty minutes. But the longest, right, like, let's say I have really, I really need a lot, a lot of analysis. I probably, I probably need like one hour to write one report. So imagine the, the kind of workload from counseling itself already taken in my role. So that is just counseling and that's just administrative work, right? And just now you all mentioned also some organize some activities, yes. So because we are part of the school team, right, part of the school, uh, teachers' team. So we do organize school events as well, such as, um, from the picture, you can see there's a cross-country run. So we all, uh, we have this five-kilometer run organized for all the students in the park. We organize sports day, teachers' day, um, career fair, all kind of events that were involved through counselor as well. Of course, I'm not the main person, but they were taking, they were asking me to contribute as well, whichever I can, right? And then we also have clubs, you know, co-curriculum in, in the school, so we also run peer support group. Imagine, or we also, so one of the day-to-day activity I need to do is also to run the club. So I need to guide the students how to run the club and then what kind of activities we can have for this peer support group on every Wednesday on our Coco Day. But that's part of the job, um, I mean. And one of, one, another big part is also the talks. When I say talks, it's not just about mental health. Or I think a few of you mentioned about career guidance, yes, we do career guidance. So student counselor, some schools, they divide career counselor and student counselor, they divided into two different person. But in our school is the mix, so, like, which means every single day, one, one late kick, we need to do everything. So career also parked under us, so I have another colleague who has just joined me, um, and last year, I'm so grateful. I'm just surviving and talking to you because I have this friend, okay, who is with me. So, uh, yeah, so he helped out with a lot of talks, mental health, like cyberbullying. We run mental health talks in general, we run, what else, anything? Emotion regulation. What else, anything? I think a lot of career events such as scholarships, we help the students to find out what kind of scholarship they can get, what kind of universities, professors talk, so there are many types of, uh, career related as well, other than mental health. And not to forget, I have a lot of meetings to attend. And one of the most stressful one, what do you think? Let me, I, I let you choose, parents, meeting with parents, meeting with teachers, meeting with career agencies. Career agencies means those universities, um, including UTN, yes. We just get contacted by UTN, um, professor in KL, yeah, to run some programs, um. Yeah, or principal or CEO in a team, which one do you think more stressful? Parents, teachers? Parents, teachers. Uh, meeting with the career agencies. Or principal or C E O of the school. Which one do you think more more stressful for me? Imagine you were in my shoes. Hmm. Parents. Well, thank you for being so understanding. Hmm. You got very, very understanding, empathetic students here. You can understand my situation so well. So parents nowadays, especially I'm currently in an international school, so imagine the expectations could be quite, quite a lot. Yeah, so dealing with parents, um some of the difficulties, I think it could be relevant to you in your future. Yeah. Uh, for example. Dealing with students who probably we suspect they may have some learning issue, for example, E D H D. Or autistic students in secondary school. So it's not easy to talk to them. You know, parents probably still in denial, so or not, not like denial, I mean. It's very difficult news to break to them, like, oh, I suspect your kid maybe have some problem with autism. I I would advise or I would suggest you to 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 see a psychologist outside of school. But this is really a hard news to break to them. Yeah, so there were a lot of angry parents who will come back to us and say, why do you say such thing to my kid? Why do you uh, um, what do you take this kind of actions? Or even they refuse the students to come for counseling session. They said my my kid can never go to counseling because I don't allow school to do so. Yeah, to that extent. So imagine um. This is one type of parents and there are another type of parents who are quite neglect. I would say neglectful of their kids. So it's very hard to find them. You cannot find them. You text them, you call them many times, they just say they are busy with work. Yeah, despite their kids actually having a lot of issues in each group. So it's not easy to deal with parents and to balance between our feelings, how between our. Our job and also to consider parents' perspective. Yeah, but that's the hardest one. This content struggle, not just parents and counselor, parents with teachers as well. It's always quite stressful in school. Yeah. Okay, um, next. Right, so just a little bit of um sample for you to see. So in, oh, by the way, right, there's something, I'm actually in the school right now. Can you hear some noise? Is it, is there any background noise that you can hear?
Uh, yes, is a call for prayer?
Uh, not really. It's actually Ben, I think.
Oh, it's okay.
Music room is upstairs, so let me know.
I can hear, I can hear something, but then uh I think it should be fine, good, unless it is disturbing to you.
Yeah, yeah, to me it's okay, but I'm afraid it's too loud for the audience. It should be. It's unbearable. So sorry about it. Okay, okay, yeah. So uh a little bit of examples of the counseling tools that I use with the students, so just just for you to understand. So in counseling setup, because they are students, they are secondary school students in, if there are primary school students, usually we have toys. Like Barbie doll or then mini Hs, or then we buy some soft toys for them. Yeah, so usually we have some toys for them to play with. That's for primary school students. For secondary school students, usually they say, ah, I'm not a kid anymore, you know. I I don't need toys. Yeah, don't don't give me toys. If you pass them some toys, they were like. Very, very like not happy with it because they they feel like they're like, I'm more adult right now. Yeah, I want to be more adult. Yeah. So cuts are something that can still bearable, is still bearable for them. They can still carry some cards, like the cards that you can see from the left. Um, is to help us to, is help them to express themselves using some cards. Such as um their feelings. It's not very common for Asian kids to talk about feelings. If, of course, um in the current generation, they are more exposed to feeling, so they will talk about, I feel. Um, I feel sad or I feel uh guilty or things like that. They have a bit more words, but still limited. Yeah, for some kids, they still prefer using some cards or tools. And you see some miniature, like little, little miniature there, right? It's actually for, um, yeah, thank you, family sculpture. Uh, this is what I learned from my family therapy. This is to, you, you, this is actually from my client, I want my client. So this is how he arranged his family. So it includes his family, like um his himself, his parents, his grandparents. And then his relatives, those who are closer to him and the distance, you see the distance as well. And how he's, how he order orderly or sequence it, right? Or place it is all depends on his um relationship with that person. Is it further or nearer? So so, yeah, there are some concepts around here, but it's very useful to to use it with with the teenagers as well. When um for Asian, again, Asian families, it's not easy for us to talk about family too. Especially we're also lawyer to our parents. We can't say bad things about parents, actually. A lot of time they'll protect their parent, they would say, no, no, it's my parents are good. Yeah, we are okay. In fact, we heard a lot of um kind of manipulative or controlling parent's story, but. There are times they would just change and say, no, no, I think my parents is right. Yeah, so this is one of the tools that I use. Um, there are some other values card. Um, I think in terms of identity, this is the age where they talk about identities. So we have this values card for them to identify what is more important in their life. Even though fourteen years old, they may not know why it's this, but we try, we explore a little bit. Yeah. Start from thirteen, fourteen years. So family tree, similar like the the sculpture, the miniature things. Help us to understand the family relationships. And sometimes I ask them to do timeline. The black bot here, timeline of their graph, their live graph. How do they see their life from three years old to eleven years old to thirteen years old and what they have experienced? So we get them to just draw and a little worksheet as well, like things that they can control, things that they cannot control. So you can see when we're dealing with teenagers, a lot of worksheets or a lot of tools can be used. Yeah, it can be quite effective. Of course, there are kids say, I don't need any of this. I just want to talk, Miss Kasey. Yes, yes, yeah, they can just talk. Yeah, for those who are very expressive. Or they just need a space to express them, we allow them to just talk one hour, one and a half, depending on the case. Yeah, right, next. Okay, so um actually, I I thought about how many cases I want to present today, to share with you. Um, I thought through this, I thought maybe a one, one case, but a very, very rich case would help you to understand. Um, in a more comprehensive way. So I actually just choose one case to present today. Um, this is my client, um female seventeen years old, yeah, eleven, yeah, eleven means um our form five, which is. The last year of their high school life. Yeah. Uh, she has an older brother and a younger brother. She's a meter child at home. So she claimed, she told me uh by to label herself, she said, I have O C D. I have obsessive compulsive disorder and then I have some anxiety issue. So she came and just talked to me like that. So she has been to therapy before seeing me in school um for around six to eight months. But we have met since last year, around eleven sessions in school already. Okay. Uh, she said that she was bullied in, when she was in preschool and primary school. Okay, and then she has a very good self-awareness. So this is a little background for you to get to know this, this client of me. Um, what I want all of you to just pay attention to is first, I'm I'm going to give you the background. Um, some of the statement that she make and then her. Um, we going to a little bit discussion about her feelings and what has made her who she is today. And then um a little bit of my perspective and my intervention with her, right? Uh, so what I want you to pay attention to is to to imagine yourself in her shoes. Yeah, imagine you were her. Seventeen years old, female, you're eleven, last year, she's going to have her exam this year, end of this year, the big exam in high school. And then she claimed that she has O C D and she has anxiety issue. She attended session outside, but she stopped and then she, now that she's in school, she continued therapy with me, was bullied back then. Okay, and she understands herself quite well. Alright. Uh, next. Yes, okay, um, a little bit of presenting issue, these are all her statements. So to give you a feeling of how she felt and how she think about herself, okay? So she said, I'm I'm not allowed to feel sad at home because my parents asked me to be happy. Okay, I love my parents, but I think they will never take my word seriously. They did not take any action when I was bullied. And they only noticed about my problem, my mental health issue, after I started cutting myself at home to cope with my pain. They don't really understand me. Okay. Uh, next. I sometimes feel like I have four persons in me. The logical one, the harsh protector in me that always criticize myself, I'm a bad person. The me, the the me in me and the one who shuts me, shut the other three person. I just want to shut down. I just want to forget everything else, shut everything down. The intrusive thoughts are so, so annoying. I have a tendency to follow restricted rules, like I only wash my hand using the wash basin in even number. I cannot stop myself from doing this. I want to stop myself. I know this is wrong, but I cannot stop myself. So hot. I feel like there's something wrong with my body. I feel pain with my body, but I don't know why. But I see doctor, doctor say I'm fine. We cannot find a reason of the pain. Okay, next. I think I'm a bad person. I've done so much of mean things in the past. And I think I deserve to be punished. I'm such a terrible person. I'm angry with myself. I always angry myself. I feel guilty and shameful about myself. I'm angry with my parents too. Who do not understand my situation when I was poorly. I thought they can do something for me, but they never, they never take me seriously. Okay, next. So the the statement just now, of course, I I did. So at that, I mean, adjusted a little bit, but basically this is what she said to me in the session. Yeah, so was very emotion, um a very emotional. She was. Um, talking to, as though like she's talking to herself a lot of time when she was with me. Yeah, so she has a very eye, good eye contact. We can talk pretty fluent, you can talk very fluent English. Um, she can express and herself quite well, but um she go. In a general one, go around and round and round. She rarely go straight to the point most of the time. So I need to ask her a lot, a lot of questions to get her talking in in the issues itself. Yeah. She usually she would just go outside of the issues and keep talking in general. Yeah. So this is why I heard from her, she bullied by a teacher when she was five years old. And then that was when she was in kindergarten, in the preschool, she said that the teacher was very biased. The teacher scolded her in front of her friends, but she didn't know what she did wrong. Um, the teacher just punish her like that. Okay, she talked to the parents, but the Terrance is okay. This, maybe you misunderstood or something. So she kind of being dismissed, her feelings being dismissed by the parents. When she was in seven years old, she bullied by her friends in school. She said that um they don't want to be friends with her, etc., etc. So she she got bullied in school. Um, there was seven years old and then in between she told me that she did some mean things to her cousins. She says something. Um, she said not good, not good. She always labor her for good and bad most of the time. I'm a good person, I'm the bad person, this is right, this is wrong, very clear. Okay. Uh, thirteen years old, she said she has made some toxic friendships. Uh, very controlling, very manipulative, she said. So the friends ask her to do certain things and because she wants to please her friends, eventually she did. Now she did something to please her friends and then fourteen years old, oh, yeah, to thirteen years old, after she noticed that it was really toxic. She said that I decided to cut off this relationship, so she cut the French, the friend. Um, cut off the friend and they never contacted after that. But fourteen years old, she self-hum. She started self-hum. She started cutting herself. Um, and just want to give an idea about self-hum a little bit. Oh, a lot of time with like, we probably will say people like, um, self-hum, why the person wants to do that, right? Is it, is it because um a lot of time we will hear people saying. Why they self-hum is because they want, they, because they feel like. They need to get rid of the pain in their heart. They feel like they have heart pain. The heart pain is even more than the pain on their hands of their cunts. That's how they feel, because that's how that helps them to survive as well, they cope with it. If if they don't do that, they feel like. They they cannot survive, they cannot function. Yeah, function as in they cannot go with their normal life, like eating, sleeping. Hang out, social, go to school, these kind of things. They they feel like they cannot do that anymore if they don't do self-hum. Yeah, that's why people um. And it's quite common in teenagers nowadays. I have quite a lot of self-hum cases in school. I'm quite. Can be shocking and can be not shocking as well. Yeah, unfortunately, we have quite a lot of cases like this nowadays. It's quite common. And it probably, probably because of the awareness from the social media as well. So they thought this is like one way of doing, so I would, maybe I would choose self-hum over other methods. Yeah, that can be as well, another influence. Okay, next. Another information for you. Um, remember just I saw, I told you about the family tree. No? So this is what I normally do as well with my my student. Um, I check about their situation at home. I find out more about their family condition. So um their age of the client, um the age of their parents, what they do for life, how's the environment at home? So apparently, uh, she has an older brother who is a very big gap from her. Uh, yeah, so the older brother actually not staying with her. In fact, this older brother actually is a step older brother. They are not, I'm I'm not too sure, is it same father or same mother? Yeah, so they are not in a, they are not staying together. She has a younger brother. Um, and from what I heard, the maternal grandmother has been conflicted for many years with her own mother. Yeah, so they are, you see the red color zigzag line, right? They're very conflicted. Um, and that actually has quite a lot of impact in their family. Because the grand, the maternal grandmother also has an impact on her. Yeah, so that's how we can see the generation of impact from the grandparents to the fathers and mothers. And then to the client, to to the kid, the child. Because a lot of time, the stress or the tension can be brought down like this. One layer, second layer. Unfortunately, some of the families, they cannot stop. Probably three layers, four layers, five layers. I don't know when they, when they can stop. But they are families who managed to stop, maybe the second or third. So it depends on how. How this client, the seventeen-year-old client, aware about the issues in the family so that she can stop. Yeah, and which is that this is one of the um goal we want to do in the session as well. Okay, so far, is there any question from any of you? Can can you understand or is it too hard to understand? Is everything okay? If you, if you can still understand so far, you just.
Uh, Yumi has raised her, Yumi, you want to ask question? He seen also raise hand, do you want to ask question?
Okay.
No doctor, sorry.
Okay, alright.
Okay, no question?
Well, I have a question.
Oh, yes, yes. She don't, right? Okay.
Uh, yes. Um. Uh, because I now, uh, I have been a teacher in a primary school and a middle school in China. The most, uh, yes, the most family members, especially students, their parents doesn't care, don't care about their. Uh, their uh kids or their children's uh mental health. Uh, their, uh, kids or their children's, uh, mental health problems. So if you face with this kind of situation, that what can you or what can we do to help the students?
Hmm, hmm, hmm. So, um, I repeat, just rephrase your question, yeah? So you mean, um, when we meet a student whose parents don't really care about mental health? They don't really care about emotional needs of their kids? And what can I do in this situation, is it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, okay, um. In fact, uh, looking at this case right now, right, is exactly the case. Is the same thing that you, you shared with me just now. The parents are not concerned about, actually the father is a doctor. Um, uh, is a medical doctor. The mom, the mom is also in the profession. I can't remember, is it, is it accountant or something? Yeah, also in a profession. So they are all professional educated person. The father is a medical doctor. But the, according to the child, right, the parents are not really. Concern or they do not prioritize on their mental health, on her mental health, her emotions. And that's why she felt like she couldn't really be sad at home. Because the mom will say you can't be sad at home. You don't, don't need to be sad. Why do you want to be sad? That's, that's not, not a big deal, right? Why do you want to be sad? So a lot of times she get this, this miss. So in sessions, we meet a lot of clients like this. And what we cannot, we can't change how parents are unless the parents are being brought. In for family therapy, which we usually try our best to convince the parents to come. Actually, I did try a few times, many times actually, to get the parents to come. Um, but the problem is there are some limitation in school and. Um, the readiness from parents to come for therapies is not easy to. It takes quite a while for them to feel like they're ready for our therapy, yeah? So fa- family therapy will definitely help them, help the parents to be more aware that they need to give emotional. Um, emotional comfort to their kid. Okay, that's one way. But if family therapy is impossible, you know, some of the parents, they just say, no, I'm, I'm okay, right? So what we can do with this kid? Um, we have one theory here, uh, we called it differentiation, self-differentiation. So some differentiation here means that how I can differentiate myself from my parents. I'm not my parents, okay? My parents, uh, don't, don't like, don't like to talk about feelings, but I'm not my parents. I can talk about my feelings. Why do I need to follow them, right? Yeah, I can choose. If they feel empowered that, oh yeah, I can do what I need, I can do what I want, I can choose my life. Then they are more separated from their parents, then emotionally they can be more stable. If they can achieve this, but honestly speaking, every one of us here, how many of us here? Every one of us here, we all, um, in the process of differentiation. All of us are doing this and it's a lifelong journey. It doesn't stop here. It doesn't stop at my age. It doesn't stop at eighty years old. Maybe they're still trying, you know, the differentiation never, never stop. It, it's just about the, um. How close you are towards differentiate yourself from your parents, because we are Asian people. Asian people, we focus on what? We focus on family. So your parents will say, you don't, you don't follow my instruction, you obey us, or you, you disobey us? Is it, you disown us, is it? Yeah, they might think that way. So this, this concern, there's a constant struggle here with within, uh, fam- Asian families particularly. Yeah, I, do I answer your question?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, okay.
You, you give me some ways that I can think of this question, yeah?
Yeah.
Though it's very difficult to solve, but we have to try our best to do that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And, and help, help their child to feel they are. They are capable to do. So a lot of time, these kind of kids, they are very helpless.
Yeah.
Hmm, they feel like, I can't do anything. I want to give up. I just want to give up. I don't want to talk to them anymore. But if we help them to not give up, to keep trying or to keep, um, working on themselves. There, there will be chances that they are, they will be okay. Yeah, thank you for your very, very good question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm, okay, any other question before I move on? No, okay, then I'll move on. When I say move on, the music also on. Okay, alright, uh, okay, question for you. Yeah, I have shared quite a bit about this, um, this client of mine, right? So my question is, how would you feel if you were the seventeen year old girl? How would you feel? You can type in your chat box so that I can kind of, um, know how you empathize. How do you empathize with this girl? If you put yourself in her shoe? It's quite difficult, isn't it? Hmm. Lonely and helpless, yeah. Suffer, hmm. Hopeless, feel like giving up on everything, hmm. Lack of confidence. She means powerless? Yeah. She felt like she can't do anything, right? Helpless, very powerless. Oh, feel sad. Hmm, John can say, I was sad and unable to achieve self-help. And need reasonable help to find answers. Yeah, so, so true, right? Sometimes they don't even feel like they deserve to be helped. It's quite sad. That they may sometimes say, I don't think I deserve to be helped. I'm a bad person, you, you don't need to help me. I have so, quite a few of them say this to me, yeah. Confused, yes. I hope someone can understand my, what I really feel inside, trying to survive, you will need. Lost aims of future life. Yeah, she's not looking forward, actually. She told me that she's not looking forward at the future life. Um, the people I love most. Have no way of understanding my feelings, yeah? And you know what? She's still constantly, um, finding ways to talk to the parents. And hopefully the parents can validate her feelings, but she still failed to do that. Hmm, she still can't get it until today. Very disappointed in the world, hmm. Not just the family, but with the world. That's how she felt as well. Anxiety, anxious, hopeless, unconfident, confused, feel of unknown future. Every day is very anxious. I want to back more young. Everyone doesn't like me very sad every day. Sad emotions continue. Don't want to meet everyone. Disappointed. I don't think anyone understands what I think, yeah. Stay alone in school until graduation and find a job and move to another city. Hmm, I hate everything, yeah, yeah. Right, so thank you, thank you for being empathetic with her, to feel how she feel, yeah? Um, that, that's how I felt as well when, when I'm doing my counseling sessions, I empathize with her. So I felt how she felt, just like how you did. Yeah, so that's part of your, part of my job, like what you are doing right now, hmm. Um, another part of our job is also to, to verbalize the feelings of her. So imagine she said, I can tell her something like, like I can feel how confused you are right now. Yeah, to name this, to, to label this, also to help her feel comforted, to feel understood, yeah, that would help. Okay, so you have done your very first step as a counselor, very, very well done, everyone. Okay, next. Sorry, I have a lot of question for you. The next one. What exactly happened in the past that may have led to her feelings? Now that you have empathized with her feelings, right? So what exactly that caused or led to this? What do you think? Based on what, whatever I shared with you. Of course, it's not a full story. Uh, but I hope at least you catch some of the main highlights in her life, yeah. Not too, trying to say not good at some subjects. Can you just elaborate a little bit more? When you say not good at some subjects? Okay, uh, maybe I want to clarify the question again. So I, what I mentioned is, um, from whatever that I have shared with you about her story in the past. Yeah, what have, um. What happened in the past actually led to her feelings, like what causes her to have all this helpless, powerless feelings? Be punished by parents and cannot understand her feelings or situations. Bullying by teachers and friends, being not, not encouraged and not supported, yeah? Being unfair to her, yeah. She mentioned so many times that she felt unfair in her life, yeah? Bullied by friends and not supportive parents. To try and say, oh, okay, I see. Thank you. Maybe parents are busy with work and do not have time to care about their children, just care about their children's food, yeah? Yeah, we, we, we care a lot about, um, shelter. Parents nowadays, they care so much about shelter. They get iPhone, they get very good, uh, bags. All the Adidas, Nike shoes, but they can't give them the emotional support, yeah, sadly. She gonna get the help from someone close to her, okay? Yeah, she not, cannot feel warm, yeah? The conflict between the family, um, her family members. No good friend to help her, yeah. Uh, yeah, I didn't talk about the friend as well, yeah. Helplessness. She, she doesn't really have many friends, that's true. No support and understanding from parents, no good peer support, yeah? Family of origin, school violence. Okay, no one supports her. Not good looking compared to other girls. Yeah, I mentioned this. Do you, do you go, vote based on the, the illustration that I shared? No one supports her. Yeah, so most of the, most of things that are traumatic environment. So most of the things that you all have mentioned here are like the bullying, okay? Um, the family being not supportive, uh, emotional support particularly, um, not being able to listen to her. Um, no peer support, right? The peers of what are so important, right? Unable to express herself, her difficulties with her parents, feelings are not being respected, yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you so much. Alright, uh, direct, next one. Okay, so a little bit from my lens, and actually you all have the qualities of become a counselor. Yeah. So you got most of this here. Um, this is how we look at it. So we, we look from. Um, usually what we do is that we understand her presenting issue, which is what she told me, okay? When I collect information from her. So I also understand from her historical, uh, background. So I shared quite a few things with you about her historical background, before she seen me, what happened in the past. So a few things that I catch is like family. Um, remember the family tree that I show you just now? So there's a tension and stress from the grandparent, from her, especially her mother's side. The grandparents to her mother and the stress and tension from the mother actually passed down to her. Right? So she can feel the stress and she, according to her, she's always the middle person. When I said middle person, means middle person between her grandmother and her mother. Imagine how stressful it is, right? Being a middle person. And she's the, and look at this here, I put a little note. She's a middle child. She is already born a middle child, always stuck in between, yeah? Between the older sibling and the younger sibling and middle child, um, if you have time, you can look for middle child syndrome. I think a lot of you probably have heard about it as well. So middle child, usually they're bonded a bit more confusion, unfortunately. And the parents, I didn't look at the, the older sibling or the younger sibling. They rarely put that much of attention. They always get like a neglected feeling in between because they are the middle child. Yeah, so imagine she's already the middle child and then she gets stuck between her parents. And she gets stuck between her mom and her grandparent. It's quite, quite, you know, quite stuck, quite sandwiched in her situation. Hmm, and a lot of time when we have family, just as someone said, family origin. Family of origin, if there are tension, anxiety in the family, usually it will pass down to the next generation. You will, you will see your kids feeling anxious easily, getting nervous, getting that feature deep. You can see their hands on, keep sucking their hands and then when they talk, they just cannot feel, they feel restless all the time. So this is something that may happen. Of course, I'm not saying guarantee, but. Some family, yes, this would just pass down and it will cause the tension in the next generation, which is the client here. Okay, so family is one area. Trauma, some people also mentioned traumatic environment. She got traumatized by the bullying experience in school last time. So trauma will cause the person to feel less, um, to feel powerless, like I have no power. I have no sense of control. I can't, can't, can't control my life, right? Let's say, all. Um, being controlled by others, by my surrounding, by my environment. So she has the feeling like I couldn't really control my life, even though I'm like what seventeen year old right now. I feel like my life is a mess and my past are the worst, you know? So in her mind, she still can refresh and refresh things like that. So it's a traumatic experience for her because it keep refreshing in her mind. And then, um, she lost trust with people. She has a lot anxiety in her. And here is the one very thing, one highlight is the guilt and shame. Oh, a lot of traumat- traumatized people actually feel guilty and shameful because she, she felt like she's at fault. It's her fault for not, um, capable in protecting herself when she got bullied. That she didn't raise her voice or she didn't defend herself at that time. She should feel ashamed. She feel ashamed about herself as well, okay? So trauma is also that led to who she is today. Another one, I think, um, your lecture will cover very well later. Right, Ericson stages, um, this is what we are looking at as well, especially for, um. Actually, not just teenagers. We, when I look at my adult clients, um, in my other clinics, this is what we look at too. Um, we look at where are they at their age and then what are they supposed to achieve? Yeah, according to Ericson stages. So in this case, right, she's stuck at her preschool time, which is the initiative versus skill level. Where she felt like she constantly feeling like she's not in control. Um, not, or constantly feeling like she's a bad person, okay? Um, and questioning herself, like, is it good or is it bad? And she's not sure about herself, so I suspect she also confused in her identity right now. Because she never passed through that, that the previous stage, which is the guilt and initiative. So she probably stuck, still stuck there. Yeah, when we start that means the following stages in every sense, so the development stages, right, maybe. That Jadi lah means cannot, cannot make it, cannot go through. So she may start, still start there. Emotions, uh, because the mom say you cannot be sad. You should be happy. Why, why are you so sad? You, you don't cry here. Don't cry, cry. Don't show weakness to us. Don't be weak. Crying is a weakness. You are so weak, so don't cry. So the mom also not crying. So she learned to adapt that way and to please the parents for. By suppressing herself. So she suppress a lot of her emotions, her feelings. So that's why, like, like a bomb now, okay? Um, and this is how I see it. The emotions suppress, suppressing of emotion is also a protection. Is a way to protect herself so that she can function her life, so that she can still go to school. She doesn't need to stay at home and withdraw from others for a year, okay? She can still go to school. She can still hang out with people, but probably in a, compared to others, she has lesser advantage. She can still hang out with people, but probably in the compared to others, she has lesser advantage in this. Yeah. The last one, attachment. She feels she has this anxious, which is insecure attachment with the with the parents, yeah, with the caregiver. So that is probably the reason why she feels so anxious around people. She very insecure with herself, especially with her peers, her friends. She constantly questioning herself like, am I a good friend to them? Do I deserve to have friends actually? Yeah. So these are some of the things that I look at. There are of course other areas as well, but these are the few things that I want to catch here. Okay, any question before I move on? Because I guess you can you probably quite relate can be can relate to this a bit more. If no question, then I'll move on. Almost, yeah, almost. No, okay, yes, okay, let's go. Right, so this is the last part, which is the intervention. In counseling, there are a lot of different school talks. So we have different one, we call it modality where. We you be different school of parts, we use different methods. Okay, so. But generally, the first thing first is always this one, which is to create safety for the clients. When I say create safety means we want to make them feel safe in this current space. So usually they don't come here and straight away they feel safe. They may still feel unsafe about potential judgment from counselor probably, or they may still feel like. People are not trustable, trustworthy. So it quite usually we take quite a while to keep them safe and we need to always assure them that he. It's okay, you are safe here, you are no longer the five year old kid, no worries. You are at a safer place right now with me and then you can protect yourself now. You are different. Okay, we want to differentiate again. Yeah, then the next one. I'm giving you some general one, acknowledge and validate their feeling. So she has a lot, a lot of stuck emotions back then. When she will younger like primary school, preschool with the parents, so. I I use quite a bit of E F E F T, which is the emotional focus therapy here where. I kind of like process a lot of stuck emotions, the emotions, the feelings that she cannot verbalize. When she was five years old, when she was seven years old. So I give her the words to to say. So I I say something like, oh, yeah. It's okay, because she has a lot resentment towards her parents. And I so I say something like, you have all the rights to 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 feel angry with your parents because. Yes, that was the time that you don't feel cared. There was a time that you don't. You don't get protected by your parents where they should do and where they should do this, something like that. So it helps them to feel understood, which is what you have mentioned just now, a lot of times she she doing, she doesn't feel like being understood by people. So in the counseling setup, we process all the stuff emotions and then we make her feel like her feelings are all and experiences are validated. Okay, and then next one. Yeah, so. This is a bit. Because the term is quite hard to understand. Engage encounters here means. We kind I kind of brought her back to probably like the five year old. And give the five year old some voices. So a lot of time in sessions, we can do something like we. Get the client to imagine herself. Of course, it's when it's radio, not every every time, but when she is ready to do that. To imagine herself being the five year old. Now that she has gone on, but when she go back to the fire or whether she, what would you like to talk to your mom? Yeah, what exactly that she want to tell her mom about how she felt? Right, so I put it is de-escalation here. Okay, so for her to express herself and her feelings. So she actually imagined her mom in the session. So I actually give her a chair. So I have an empty chair in my room. I put an empty chair there. I say, imagine, I I put a, I think a Pikachu or something, a sheep, a toy sheep there. As I imagine this is your mom, okay, right, it's a mom. And she's here in front of you and for you to talk to her. Okay, so then we start. Yeah, so sometimes we do this as well. Okay, and then I think that's all for my case example. I think the next one. Oh, yeah, okay. I like this quote so much. It's from the a very well-known therapist called Yavin Yalom. So he said that effective therapy should never try to force discussion of any content area. But therapy should be cured, not should not be territory driven, but relationship driven. I think it's the same for teacher relationship with students as well. Like, even though how skillful I am, how technical I am, how good is my skills, right? The the what what is the most effective thing is actually the relationship. How good is the relationship between myself and that girl? If we are actually having a very, very close relationship, she has trusted me. She we can co-regulate ourselves. She can feel safe with me. She can feel the trust, the warmth, the care from me. This is something work for her already. Yeah, so it doesn't really matter what method it is. Is it so so good method or is such a bad method? Whichever it is, it's about the relationships that that I believe. Yeah. Okay, and I think that's that's all for the case. So and this is the last one. But before before I go through this, my drawing, my work drawing challenges, is there any questions about this case? Or you want to leave the question in the Q and A time?
I have question.
Oh, yes.
Okay, how many times that do you have to talk to the student she opens up for you because you mentioned relationship, right? How long does it take for for her?
For this particular student? Oh, the first time I saw her, she was so skeptical about me. She throw me so many testing question. She test water, right? She tested my reaction. She look at my reaction. She see how I responded to her. The first. I think the first feel was, yeah, she was still testing until. What I think, fourth session onwards, four or five, she was getting more comfortable with me. And then you know what? She praised me too. Yeah, so so I was quite shocked because. I I think I think we did something and then we process a lot of emotions, a pause and refrain. Then she said, oh, you're really good. So you 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 can sense that the changes of the relationship. Yeah, from from the mistrust stage and then later she test water, then she troll you a lot of things to test your responses. Then we process together. She has some safety, she has some space. Then you know you notice that her reaction to you has changed. Yeah, she gets more calm. When she talks to me, she get more calm and then there are times that once a while she will come and look for me. I don't know why. Yeah, so you can see how much her, I think it's the the trust has been established. Yeah, yeah, that's why she should felt like this is a space for her to talk. And whenever she feels like she's not in a good. Good mood or good condition, she will she will not hesitate to come and look for me. Yeah, yeah, I think that that's the most important thing because she know there's outlet here.
Any other question, guys?
Yeah, any questions about the case?
Hello, I have a question, Cassine. It's nice to meet you. I'm also a teacher from China. I want to know if a student forced to meet you and she didn't trust you and didn't want to say anything. And didn't want to open your heart for you. How can we? Let them trust me, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I can imagine how struggle it is, right? Yeah, yeah, not talking and then, yeah, not responding.
Yeah, refuse to communicate.
Yeah, 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 I actually have client like that. I have a student, I have a few students like that. Thank you for your question. It's a very good question. So what? I did with that a few of them, right? One of them, he was not having eye contact with me. This is how he react. He's like this. For more than twenty minutes. Oh, no, 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 sorry, maybe more than thirty minutes. He just like this, not talking. And then look down, do this. Okay, this is what he does. No matter how how many question I ask him, then he started to talk to me. You remember the mini H of the family mini H thing? The little mini H. I was thinking maybe I use some tools to talk to him. Yeah, he doesn't want to talk. It's okay. I told him it's okay if you don't want to talk. Or maybe you are not ready, but it's okay. How about this? Maybe I I give him something. So I say, maybe you can share a little bit with me about yourself, you and your friends. So so I say now this is you. Who are your friends? So he put his friends like around him, something like that. And. I asked one question, then he replied one or two words, but at least he answered. Yeah, so I was quite grateful that he actually answered. Then it took place like maybe forty or forty-five minutes, then we ended the session. The next time I met him. Still the same, he took a while to warm up, but I I was surprised that he actually opened up. He he did talk after that a little bit. And now I said have seen him. I think at least six or seven times. He can talk to me fluently. And have to stop him to talk. Yeah, so so I think it's the the rapport in the beginning so important. So the first time, the second time, how you react to the students, are you trying to judge him or are you trying to be? Friend with him? I think he can feel it. So probably it's not, it's not, it's not threatening. Ah, this is the word. For him, maybe, oh, this teacher or this counselor is not threatening, it's safe. Then he feel like, okay, maybe I can try talking to her. Yeah, so use some tools, just I have shared a little bit of tools, right? Drawing or whichever he likes can be drawing or comics or soft toys or mini H cards. Cards are quite useful. I think for teachers, we have cuts and it's quite useful to to help them to express. Yeah, so hopefully those are helpful for for the kid. Do I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I also tried art therapy before, yeah. When I meet children, they don't want to talk, maybe you want to join because I'm an art teacher.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I think art therapy is a good way.
Yes, yes, especially traumatized kids. Like I worked in shelter before, they they love drawing. Yeah, they love colors. So give them some colors and then they can start expressing themselves. That's a good way.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I saw some questions already. Oh, Zhang 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 Gan, Zhang Gan, you sent to me prime. Oh, okay. I think you sent to me.
I saw another question as well just now.
Yeah, okay. Is it?
Wait, there's one question. Yeah, Bing, are you there? Chatis is has raised in. Do you have a question? Young, young purpose? Are you here? Can you ask your question directly? Okay, the question let me ask on behalf. Many times as teachers, we help many students deal with psychological problems. However, as time goes by, we also have some psychological problems. How can we, how can we deal? So Cassine, how do you decompress, disattach yourself because you are resolving other people's issues? I think is this what you're trying to ask Yang Po?
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's unavoidable, right? When we deal with a lot of students issue, we put a lot of students issues on our shoulder. Yeah, I think I I was just talking to some of the teachers in my school about it, about boundary. I'm not sure. I think in in education course day, there is like a. Module about, I'm not sure, is that like a module about boundary between teacher and students? Yeah, so I I suppose that 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 line has to be even clearer. Because sometimes it's it's blurred, means that means that we we over taking a lot of responsibility. Or even emotions from the students unaware unaware. So means a lot of time you don't really, you don't even notice that you actually have. Taken their emotions on your shoulder. Yeah, so. One thing that would help is actually to be more clear with your boundary, just like me. I I used to. I used to take every case like so so serious until I couldn't sleep at night. Until I go back home eating, I still thinking about it. And then until I talk to. My partner, I talk to my friends and of course not the case, but I talk about how stressful it is and things like that. Because I cannot draw the line clearly and I noticed that and I stopped myself. I kind of make it clear. After what time I shouldn't pick up calls. After what time I shouldn't text my students. I know they come sometimes texting them. Midnight, but I don't reply. I take time to reply them. I don't reply straight away. So I think this will help to prevent this psychological problem to happen. Okay? Well, if it's a bit too late, we forgot to draw our line. It has happened. What to do? Okay? We, of course, I do, I do look for my own counselor as well. So counselor do look for counselors. It's normal. Psychologists also look for psychologists. It's normal. So if you find yourself. Usually this is our turn. We always say unable to function, but in general, in simpler ways, when you feel like you can't sleep, you can't eat. The eat habits have changed, your sleep pattern has changed, your body shape has changed. Your 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 colleagues say you are quite abnormal lately, huh? What happened to you? Why you don't talk or why you talk too much? This are all the changes. You cannot concentrate well, very forgetful and things like that. If you feel like this is quite stressful for you, then just sick health. When I say sick health means you look for a counselor, you look for a therapist. Yeah, but if you feel like still manageable, it's not to that extent, I'm still functioning okay. But just a bit stressed open up, then maybe you can try. Yeah, I know it's very. Go very general like what exercise, watch Netflix or. Bean show, some shows or get distracted a little bit. And of course, of course, I as a counselor, we always talk about self-care. Self-care means you take care of yourself, you. Take care of yourself, you you do things that you like, things that you enjoy and. And a lot of time I also include self-care. The self-care element, one of the big part of self-care element is actually forgiveness. You forgive yourself. That's also self-care. You forgive that you can't do much. For your kids, for those students sometimes, yeah, but that is also self-care. That will help a lot. Okay? Yeah.
Okay, so that question is coming from Yang Po. Chatis, your hand is raised. Your question?
Yes, doctor. My question is. Okay, what is the most challenging situation for a counselor? Especially when giving counseling to a reluctant patient? And is it can be stressful about being a counselor? And uh is it can be stressful about being a counselor? That's my question.
Hmm, 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 hmm. Hmm, a straightforward answer is yes. It is stressful, uh, especially in school, okay? School setting is very different, school, we have willing client. They come in, they said, Miss Kasia, I want to see you, can, okay, okay, that's willing, huh? We have unwilling cases, like, sorry, teacher asked me to come here, I don't know why I need to come here, but teacher asked me to come here. Yeah, these are unwilling cases, so if they refuse to see you, uh. Again, it's about rapport, rapport building, how we can build their rapport with the kid and be very neutral about it. Because a lot of time they thought, my, I have done something wrong with it, that's why my teacher asked me to see counselor. But in fact, a lot of time, the the main purpose is to support the students. The counselor's job is to support the students, to find out what happened and how we can support them better. Instead of judging them, hey, you are here, you did a wrong thing and you come for counseling, so. Uh, yeah, so it's to build the rapport and to be neutral when you talk to them. Hmm, I think that that would be helpful. For them to build trust. Yeah, okay.
Uh, does that answer your question? Okay, uh, Shatish is uh clapping, so I assume yes. Uh, so, uh, the next set of question, uh, Cessin, uh, we haven't even gone through Q and A, and there's a lot of good questions here. Uh, the next set of question is actually from Jingwon and Yu Jie. Uh, both are related to parents, so Jingwon's question is. Uh, how do you make it easy for the parent to accept that, uh, the student needs help?
Hmm.
And then your Yu Jie's question is, if I can summarize, uh, it's probably something. An issue that, uh, Yu Jie, uh, faced in in work before. So, um, parents, uh, the, uh, in denial, meaning, uh. Ins- insisting that the the student, uh, is, uh, is the student's issue. It's not the parents', uh, uh, problem.
Hmm.
Yeah, uh, Yu Jie, hopefully I summarize your question correctly. Uh, yeah, do you have any suggestion? So number one is, uh, parents in denial, uh, number two, how do you, um. Get the parents to work with you in terms of accepting your your recommendations?
Hmm, 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 okay, so I'll go with, uh, Jingwon's question first, yeah. Um, when you said the student has a mental health problem and must see a psychologist, I assume. You were saying, when you said mental health issues, it must be like, is it, is it something like depression and Zati? Uh, that kind of issue, is it, is it, do you mind to just? clarify a bit.
Uh, Jingwon, can you, uh, explain you?
Or or you refer to, like, ADHD or, um, you know, the kids with some neurodevelopmental issue? Which one are you?
Like ADHD.
Okay, okay, it's more towards, uh, uh, neurodevelopmental issue, like learning disability, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, so what can be done to make it easier for parents to accept? Hmm, oh, this is really hard, um. We usually, we don't really convince them, but we will try. Again, it's the neutrality, like how neutral you can put it, because some of the words can be quite hurtful for them. For example, you say they are abnormal, your kid is abnormal in school, that's really hurting, right? Um, or you say something like, uh, your your stu- your your child is misbehaved. Or your child, um, yeah, these are all the labeling, we we try to avoid all this labeling. Just don't talk about all this labeling, just say that, um, we are really concerned, show our concern to the parent, um, we really like it. Like your child, and we we really see potential in him or her, um, in doing this so well. The subject so well, so we hope that we can, um, with our concern and care. We notice these observations in class. So put it more factual and also give your observations as well, so that they can't really deny it. Observation means observation, right? You can deny the observation. So, um, class observation, teacher's observation, um, counselor's observation. These are all helpful for them to see it, but whether they want to accept it or not, it's really not up to us, honestly. Yeah, because it takes time for them to, um, to accept, to see and accept. So what we can do is that we we call them the first time, they say, no, 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 my kid is not like that, okay, they hang up, okay? Then another month, okay, you collected another data, another set of data. You try again, you call again, right, and then you explain again, no, 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 okay, never mind, the third time. So it takes quite a while for them to like, okay, see the issue. If if after so many times of reporting and the parents still remain denial. Honestly speaking, unfortunately, there's nothing much that we can do. Hmm, because we have done our part. Here, hmm, we do have students, um, parents like this. So it's quite a bit helpless in that set situation, but we really can't do much. Yeah, okay, for Yu Jie's question, right? Um. So in short, the question is, how can I help the students? So I, um, for Yu Jie, right, when you mentioned, the 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 student has no problem. In very active in school, social indicators normal, um, but appear restless and. There's some problem with communication. So what, but parents deny this, parents say, parents not denying, but parents say. It's students' problem.
Jie, can you come and explain your question, because, uh, we we have some gaps there to understand what you're trying to say, yeah?
Yeah. Oh, he said, in fact, I think this is apparent for all, he said that he, Yu Jie means. In your point of view, it's actually parents' problem. Hmm, okay. Oh, the, okay, so you said that the student is simply having trouble communicating, communicating with the parents. So is, so are you saying it's actually the family issues? Yeah, so he has some, this student actually have some family issues and problem communicating with the parent at home. So what can I do for the, for the student, is it? Can can Yu Jie come and explain a bit?
Jie, where are you?
Or maybe we can go to other questions.
Other question, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Zhang Fan say, we do have psychological tests. Yeah, in China University to find out some special students, yeah, yeah. What should we do when we are talking to them, because some students think they. Uh, okay, so you, your question, Fan's question is, um, how do we talk to, um, students? Potentially with some, um, some neurodevelopmental issues, is it? Like, how how do we communicate with them, hmm, so that they don't feel offended or they feel like I'm special, okay? Uh. Yeah, we're talking to them, hmm. Usually they felt like they are being treated differently, it's because people judging them, like they feel judged. So, yeah, I think again back to the neutrality, how do we talk to this, um. Special needs, students with special needs, right, is to. Is to respect them and accept who they are, because sometimes they may behave or they talk a little bit differently. So if we are able to detect that and not judging their behaviors or their their words. Think that that would already help them a lot in helping them with their self-esteem. Because a lot of time they feel like the self-esteem maybe quite low. Yeah. I hope I answer your question, because I'm not too sure. The question is. Okay. You may all mention some, uh, something, so in my previous work, my school was a boarding school and there was a girl who had a serious mental disorder. Suicidal behavior and she had to suspend school for treatment, hmm. After about half a year, she came back to school, but no one was willing to leave with her. Hmm, means means no one, no friends want to be with her, is it, stay with her? And the psychologist told us that it would worsen her sit- her condition. But there are still no students willing to, oh, so she's, oh, yeah, because it's boarding school. So no one wants to leave with her, I still don't know how to do the right thing, because we can't force others. Hmm, yeah, this is quite hard. Hmm, hmm, hmm. Yeah, I'm not sure if she has friends. If she has some friends, ju- just a few actually would help a lot already. Yeah, but I can understand why others are scared, right? To to leave with her, because she has some suicidal behavior, so they're probably afraid about it as well. But I think, okay, one, one good point here is you mentioned about the treatment. She was suspended from school and then she went for treatment for half a year, okay? I think that if, um, if the therapist or the psychologist can actually come up with some testimony. Or some progress report to show that, uh, after the half a year of treatment. How has she progressed up to that time? Then probably it would help the school, it would, um, yeah, it would help the school. To to make the arrangement about the body, because I think with that testimony, people would be more convincing. Yeah.
Uh, Cessin?
Yes.
Um, I've seen there's more questions that are coming into the chat function. These questions are a lot of case referrals, so, uh, I think you haven't finished your presentation yet.
Oh, oh, actually, it's it's okay, actually, the last one, yeah, it's okay, it's a joy and a challenge, yeah, it's okay, no worries. It's a, it's a, that's the last slide, actually.
Oh, okay, uh, I, please, uh, you might want to ask, no, you might want to finish off your session just now. Okay, in that case, is it possible, okay, there's a lot of questions coming in. Uh, um, some of them are quite difficult as well, because it's case refers. So, um, if, uh, probably we can give Cessin, uh, Cessin, you can glance through. Uh, the rest, the rest of the questions, and then, uh, send me that, a a general statement, because, uh. Yeah, we have taken a lot of Cessin's time, actually.
No worries.
The session is one hour, guys, so it's only one hour, but it. It turned into almost two hours session, uh, so, um. Yeah, uh, Cessin, go ahead and have a look at the questions.
Yeah.
But, uh, guys, while Cessin is looking at the question, thank you so much for your participation. Uh, very active, very good questions asked. Um, it shows that you are really thinking about what Cessin has shared just now. Uh, and of trying to relate it to what you are, the species that you're familiar with. Okay, uh, Cessin, over to you.
Hmm, okay, um. Yeah, I think a few questions about communication, students having communication with their parents. And then, um, yeah, like, how should we guide students to consult with their parents, because they have family issues? Um, again, it's a boundary, I I don't know how much, uh, a teacher or even even counselor. If I'm counselor, then probably I can suggest a family therapy like I suggested just now. But if, like I said, if the parents, um, refuse to make some changes or make some progress. Then there's nothing much that we can do, but yes, how would, how do we guide the students to consult with their parents, um? Oh, okay, here's a, here's a thing, we we encourage them to talk to the parents, but we don't really know. How the parents receive this, so there are some parents who may be a bit more, let's say, I'm just putting example. Let's say the parents are more controlling or are more aggressive parents, so they may respond with a very harsh way. Um, so I, I'm, so I'm not too sure, if we ask the students to be more open and to consult with their parents. Is it really a good thing? I'm not too sure, is it, is it a, um, a ready step? It, are are they ready to talk to the parent? Yeah, that's the, that's another question we need to check, whether they're first, whether the parents ready for communication, that's one. Whether the student at that time ready, uh, to talk to their parents, like, to express themselves, that's another question. So I think it really depends on situation, um, and again, it's a boundary, whether is it something that we need to do? Or even a teacher need to do, because it's actually family issues. Hmm, yeah, uh, another thing, I think another question also about communication, like, when students having some communication problem, right? Uh, what we can do is actually, there are some workshops outside. There are some NGOs or even some private centers that actually organize workshops, peer support groups. They actually have all this therapy and groups to help students to improve their communication skills. Yeah, so I think we can actually suggest them to attend this kind of workshops. It will help them to improve their relationship with others by learning how to talk properly with others. Hmm. Um, how about the last one, is 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 it a question? Jing. Not a question, right, is a statement?
Yeah, it's a comment.
It's a comment, hmm. Yeah, 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 but generally from all your question, right, I can sense all this. Students here are very concerned students, I'm very concerned teacher. Yeah, you really cared about the students about being and and you really want to know how you can help the students, yeah. I think generally this is a trait in teachers, isn't it? Yeah, constantly want to help and see what you can do, but remember, I think one student asked about the, what is that? How about us, when teachers have some psychological problem, what to do? So do remind yourself, you can't do everything, you are not super mensable woman, hmm. So do take care of yourself as well while you are helping your students. Yeah, I think that's all for now, I don't see any other questions, right?
Yeah, uh, I don't see any other question as well, so, uh, thank you so much, Cessin. Uh, class, please give a virtual reaction, uh, a virtual clap to Cessin.
Hey.
There's there's a reaction button at the bottom, uh, for you to use, uh, thank you so much for, uh.
Thank you.
Spending your time with us, um, sharing a lot, uh, I agree with you. Just one issue alone, it takes that much time for us to process and and essentially unpack. Uh. Uh, so, uh, class, uh, come, let let us go back to the slide that, uh, I shared with everyone. Uh, just now, Cessin mentioned Erickson, the name Erickson was, uh, highlighted. So it is inside the slide, actually, on slide fifteen. Uh, is this the same Erickson that we're talking about, uh, Cessin? Eight stages of development where, uh, yeah, the the case that you're studying is actually still in this stage. This stage here refers to preschool stage.
Yes.
So she is currently in, at, I should say, young adulthood, or adolescent.
Adolescent, yes, she is currently, yeah, seventeen, yes.
Yeah, so, but she is still stuck at, uh, two stages be be behind.
Hmm.
So imagine the ca- the amount of work that Cessin has to do in order to help this particular student to to get past. Uh, her, um, her concerns, uh, especially on 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 the parents, on her own, uh. Uh, her, um, her concerns, uh, especially on, on, on the parents, on her own, uh. Self, uh, confidence, um, how she perceive herself, uh, against her friends, family members and so on, so. Good to know, uh, Kasey, you highlighted this particular theory, uh, there's other sets of theories as well, uh, so I. Uh, I, I would like you guys to go and have a look at the slide, the link is in, uh, e-learning. Um, recording will be given at e-learning as well, uh, after Webex has generated, um, this particular component. Uh, the recording, uh, but before I close the session, um, just want to ask Kasey a few, uh, questions really. Um, number one, uh. Have you worked with other teachers, because, okay, if you notice the questions that I ask leading on to six P M are all management related questions. Because the topic will be, uh, our course, guys, is managing student development, as much as you want to. Uh, think about the students' case by case, you are now thinking along the lines of managers. School principals, school administrators, vice principals and so on, so put yourself in that head. Um, Kasey, can you share with us, how do you work with other teachers? Uh, in instances, for example, students shows, uh, self-harm, uh, did the teacher give hints to you? So that you, uh, you can go and observe a, a student, for example, how does it work?
Hmm, hmm, okay, uh, okay, I, first of all, I need to just, just, uh, like a disclaimer. Every school, they work differently, like school counselor, in every school, they have different policies. So you will see quite a different management or crisis management in general. So for our school, it's not, the counseling department is not as established. Even though they do have counselor, but it's not, the rules, the policies are not so good, yeah, not so comprehensive yet. So for now, if let's say we have suicidal cases or self-harm cases. Um, what they will do is that actually they will just come straight to me, they will refer the student straight to me. They will tell me the observations they have in the class. And there are times I need to interview other students in the class, so I do, um, for now, I don't really sit in and observe, but. When required, yes, I do sit in and observe the students when required, but not all the time. So I can re, either sit in or I can actually talk to their classmates, um, of that suicidal, uh, case. Their classmates and then to understand the, the condition and the. The condition, yeah, the condition of the, 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 the student in the class, so they, the teachers come to me straight. And then I will, once I have met the students, uh, in, in person, in session. Then I will update the teacher again, so I will meet the teacher again to update and then we think about what is the moving forward. So usually they will ask, oh, what should I do, uh, what, what can I do in for this case? Then we will figure what would be the most appropriate way. So some of the cases, I need to report directly to the principal, so for example, last year I have a family abuse case, very serious. Uh, so I did, uh, even, I, I even, uh, I talked to the principal, I reported to principal. And then principal reported to the C E O of the school, which is the, the principal's boss. And then, um, we decided, we talked to the student personally, all of us. And we also decided to inform the Kabajikan, which is the welfare department, Malaysia Welfare Department. So we called them, we reported as well, and then, uh. Yeah, so, so there are quite a few things, um, that, that, the procedure that we have to do in school. As a student, as a school counselor, um, if it's a suicidal case, usually stop at principal and parents. So usually, we reported to principal, then we would decide, okay, is it a case to be reported to the parents? If it's second must, then we will have a meeting with parents, they have to come to school. Yeah, so it depends on severity of the case, usually the bridge case, like the bridge confidentiality cases are suicidal. Okay, when they say, oh, I, I feel I want to kill myself, I want to jump from the building, um, they cut themselves, they harm themselves. Um. Hmm, and this one more is something like, uh, they, okay. It's, it's not bullying case, but it's, it's, uh, they use social media to spread something about school. Something bad about school, yeah, that, that's something that we take it very seriously as well. We, we'll directly report to principal.
Yeah, okay, uh, so guys, uh, again, thinking about you, your role as a manager, as a school principal. Uh, as administrator, uh, think about, uh, the procedure that you have, how do you manage? Okay, so, uh, what, uh, what is your responsibility? Because every chain of decision-making, um, uh, individual in your school. Will have, uh, some, some responsibility that he or she has to handle. So, um, before escalating cases, probably, we might want to have, okay, what is the, uh, sense operating procedure like? And then, uh, what is your role, uh? Where to report, what kind of intervention, the word that Kasey used just now, the kind of intervention that you can do to help. Uh, final, final, final question before we close, Kasey, um, now, uh, it's. As you mentioned just now, every school has, uh, its own way of looking at things, your school. Look at, uh, counseling as, uh, as a complete package, meaning career counseling and then.
Hmm.
Put together, uh, in an ideal world, uh, what is it that you would like to see? In an ideal world, here guys refer to, uh, if you have all the resources that you can have. If you have everything that you can do, any decision that you can, a big counselor, what would you like to see?
Hmm, 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 perfect question for me. Like giving me a magic wand, I can do anything I want.
Yeah.
So first, I don't want to do career counseling. So I can separate that, okay, so I don't, um, I, I, I mean, ideally. The career and the mental health counselor should be separated, because it's a totally different field, actually. Yeah, so career guidance, we can have it for, do it for the career, career guidance team, they have format, they can form a team. So they can run the talks, workshops and give advisors to students about universities, rest, um, availability. Occupations, their job, their interest, et cetera, et cetera, the tasks as well, okay? And then for mental health, well, counselor, then we can just fully focus on this. So we can do, what we can do is like the policy, so we can have more time to run through the school policy, revise the policy, S O P. And then, um, of course, we can handle more counseling sessions. Then we can run more, um, you know, talks that relevant to the mental health issues. Bullying or, um, self-esteem, time management, yeah, actually even time management, they, they consider as part of it. Uh. Let me think, what else? Some of the schools, they actually have school council, they teaching, I'm lucky, I don't need to.
Uh, about to ask, forgot to ask, uh, this question, whether you're teaching or not, because your role alone is quite heavy.
Hmm, yeah, I refuse to teach, yeah, I refuse directly, yeah. Um, because the counselor before me, actually, she, she does, she did, hmm, so you can imagine how burdened the work is. Yeah, um, and okay, one, one more thing is the school events, I do find the pros and cons of school events. Um, I do like joint to school events, because I think I can get close to my students in general. They, they see me, they know me, and then we can talk, it's a good catch-up. But, uh, it would take a lot, a workload for me as well, yeah, it's another workload. So it's a balance between how much I take, um, I mean, how much I can mingle around with the students and how much. I need to do, I mean, work I need to do, so school events pending. Hmm, yeah.
Okay, so that, that's, that, uh, now, guys, if you are a manager, school principal, these are the. There you have seen two perspectives, uh, as from the school counselor, uh, herself, Kasey. Uh, looking at the various cases, uh, what she does, uh, every day, uh, and, um. The other part of it is, if you are a manager, how would you manage this, uh, problem, uh? Not, not to say problems, but then the different roles and responsibilities that you have to handle. Uh, in this case, a, a school counselor's look, uh, especially, so, uh, it's six P M on my time. Uh, I think, Kasey, you, you have to go back already, you have been in school for the whole day. So, uh, guys, give Kasey another round of love, uh, thank you so much, Kasey. Uh, for coming to my class, um, I learned a lot today. Um, and, uh, I think this is an effective way for, I, I, I think everyone here agrees that. This is a really effective way of looking at the theories, uh, immediately coming from, uh, what you do every day. So, uh, yes, there's a lot of love coming out, uh, so thank you, uh, thank you so much, uh, last words, Kasey, before I close the class.
Well, I want to add one more info, um, one counselor, the ratio for one, for the school, right, the number of students. Um, current last year was one to one thousand two hundred. I, one, one counselor to one thousand two hundred students, okay, that is very bad ratio.
Yeah, why the idea ratio?
Okay, idea ratio according to the, um, U S, uh, A P A Association is actually one to two hundred fifty. Okay, but well, in Malaysia, it's quite hard to achieve this. So even if we can achieve like one to five hundred is already great enough, actually. Yeah, yeah, so one to five hundred is okay, but of course, one to two fifty is even better.
Idea, yeah.
Yeah, idea, okay, thank you for inviting me, Dora, for, for this sharing, even I myself feel that I learned a lot too. Yeah, from the sharing itself, okay, thank you, oh, yeah, if, um, do you think they, they need my email, if. Do you, should I share my email or something?
Uh, yes, you can share your email with them, um, the other thing is, I will share. Um, I, if you don't mind, I would, I can share your email with them, uh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Be given, uh, the chat log as well, so I just edit, uh, put in, uh, your email, Kasey, and then they will have a copy of.
Yeah, 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 sure, sure, okay.
Okay, so, thank you, guys, uh, I'm closing the session, uh, Kasey, have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Rest well, for the rest of you, I will see you again next week. We will tackle another set of, uh, case study, uh, this time around coming from Iza. Uh, she will talk a little bit about her experience on early childhood development, specifically. How she has worked in kindergarten, the experience, the observation that she, she, she has. So bye, guys, bye, Kasey, thank you so much for coming.
Bye.
Bye, Doctor.
Bye, Kasey.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
And then bye.